Good evening and welcome to our Budget Workshop for the Board of Education. At this time, I'd ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to welcome the members of the Board of Finance who have joined us here this evening. We have the Chairperson, Rich Sulio, George Seaborn, and Mike Maddow. Thank you for joining us. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into Executive Session inviting the Board members from the Board of Finance in addition to the people listed.
Matt Penheimer, my vote to enter an executive session and invite Superintendent Francine Cross, Business Manager Tracy Decker, Director of People and Personnel Services Andrew Peters, and others as specified.
Steve Carr, second.
George Seaborn, and the rest of the Board of Finance.
Steve Carr, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are entering into Executive Session at this time.
...by the Board of Finance, and what it does is when we get to the end of the budget year, if there's a balance left in the budget, anything that's up to 2% of the total budget can be held in this non-laxing account for the Board to use as they see fit. So at the beginning of the 2022 year, the balance was about $536,000. A big chunk of that was spent on the Center School gym. At the end of the 2022-2023 year, there was $86,000 left in the budget, which was deposited into the non-laxing account. So we started the current fiscal year at a balance of $239,000. Through today, we've spent $66,000, and there's an additional $75,000 that's set aside for specific purposes, engineering and for a capital five, 10-year capital plan. So that will leave us with a balance at the end of this year of $97,000 plus whatever is left in the budget. Hopefully, there will be something left in the budget. So that is the non-laxing account.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions regarding that? Okay, moving forward into our 2024-2025 Special Education Related Services and Equipment Rates.
And so what that is, are rates that we would charge students who came into district and was paying tuition if they required additional services. So if they needed speech therapy or physical therapy, a paraprofessional. So these are the rates that we publish that we would charge if a student came into, say, past program and needed additional services.
You do? If I could have a motion to approve these rates, please?
Steve Carr, motion for the possible action on 2024-2025 Special Education Related Services and Equipment Rate Approval.
Matt Penheimer, second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Now, we're moving into our operating budget and capital presentations.
So I know last year, there was a lot of paper in front of everybody, and it was very cumbersome. So what I presented tonight is a summary of the budget. So for those of you that don't really know how the budget works yet, the Board of Ed comes up with their expected expenditures. That's the operating budget. There's revenue streams that grants, tuition, gate money when people come to a game, that offset those costs. So the net amount, expected cost less that revenue, is the amount that the Board of Education is requesting from the taxpayer. So that's why you'll see there's two pounds, there's the operating budget, and then there's the town allocation. So the town allocation is what will go to the Board of Finance to then go to town key for budget approval. So the Board of Education budget is made up of several different departments. First department is Central Office, so that's anything that happens within the superintendent's office and any benefits for all employees. So any of our health insurance, that's all that's included. So Central Office itself has the salaries for all the staff that are working in that department. Contractually, there were increases, and I also increased my own hours. Previously, the business manager had a full-time staff who was both payroll and his assistant, for lack of a better term, that did handle a lot of day-to-day. We now outsourced payroll, which is a lot fewer hours than that previous full-time person was. So I had to increase my hours slightly to make up for that difference. So benefits, Anthem's anticipated increase for health insurance this year is 11%, 11.6%. However, in going through the list, we have a lot more in staff who took the waiver this year. So I was able to keep the benefit increase to only a 1% increase. Other professional services include, previously, we had our HR person was outsourced. We hired them through advance, so they were under other professional services. She's now on board here, so she's under salaries. So that's why there's a decrease in that line. People transportation is our magnet school transportation. Debt service is under other equipment. So when I first started, so 12 years ago, we did a energy improvement project across all of the town buildings. That is still, we're still paying off that bond. So that's what this debt service is, is for the three schools piece of that energy improvement process. We did see decreases in our utilities because of it, so the offset is there. So that is the Central Office budget. The second one is the Center School. So Kristin?
Before we switch over, are there any questions regarding Central Office for Tracy? Okay. Thank you.
I can hear you better.
Thank you. Kristin Vernier, the Principal of Center School, and I will be speaking about the Center School operating budget for next year. When we compare the enrollments, because we always work by how many students we have, roughly, we anticipate the same enrollment for next year, which is roughly about 200 However, there were, we did originally request a couple of new staff members, if you recall, two years ago. The current, when they were third graders, there were four classrooms per group. Last year, we cut that down to three. I originally asked for a fourth teacher back to maintain those numbers, and through our budget process, prior to coming here, that was cut. The other request that I always ask for is full-time art teacher, so that way we have a full complement of specialists and, again, understanding the need for other priorities. That was also cut. Our budget is very similar to last year's budget. Our requests are very similar, pointing, you know, contracted, our contracts went up a little bit, and, you know, personnel went up a little bit, not because we're getting more personnel, but because of the natural increase in salaries. Some of our expenses went up. As you know, with a home budget, it naturally goes up year to year, and so that's where a lot of our increases are. Object 300, the line looks like it increased quite a bit. It went from 3,800 to 33,000, and that's only because as Decker put in the substitute line in that line where it should be, back to where it should be. The object line 400, there's an increase in repairs. You know, I joked that Center School is like this old house, and it needs some love and some repairs, and we are requesting some things, primarily in bathroom maintenance and purchasing new classroom blinds as well. If you've been to Center School recently, you know that the blinds are, many of them are in disrepair, you can't open or close, and so that went into that line, which increased a little bit. The other lines are, you know, pretty much the same, give or take based on, you know, natural increases in. Does anybody have any questions for Center School? Thank you. I apologize, I went out of order. That was my fault. So the budget is set up, 01, Central Office, 02, Center School, so I was just going in that order. I did notice that Jeff had it in a different order, so we'll get back on track. Technology, was that even go up and talk about technology?
No.
No. Technology doesn't have, technology's tough, because as you know, the cost of technology just keeps growing, and I think Jeff and Jose do a very good job of taking a look at what software we have, what we're using, and making sure that we're not doubling up on anything. I'll just read down, this is, Jeff almost had prepared this for me, so the largest increase is in, keep going up, right there, software licenses. And I believe the only new thing in there is, I'm not gonna remember the name of it, but it's a software that they will be able to use to track all of their software and all of their hardware, as far as when it was purchased, how many repairs it's had, and it can cross over to other departments. So they'll be able to use it for, the custodians will be able to use it for their equipment. So they'll be able to track furnishing, all their, you know, floor strippers, the equipment that they use. So it's a very versatile piece of software that they base for. I think it'll be a good fit. And then the, okay, so the other increase from Jeff was to replace desktops within the schools for the teachers, because they are extremely outdated and need to be replaced.
We use desktops in the school building to run the short throw projectors or the smart board system that we have. So that technology is less expensive to replace as it is as a desktop than it was in other options that Jeff presented.
Yeah, one of the things that Jeff had looked at was if you could get laptops, but then you need the docking station so that they can talk to the smart boards, and, you know, the more pieces you have, the more things that can break. So the standalone desktop was the cheapest option.
Then he also looked at leasing, which is something that we have not done in the past year. We've done outright purchasing.
That is technology. Next is pupil services.
So you guys have already heard a lot from me tonight, but I'll go ahead and say that, of course, the pupil services budget is the most mercurial, the most difficult to predict in the district, and this is largely due to potential folks moving into the district who already have standing out placements and that related cost and transportation cost, as well as if we need to move towards an outplacement for any of our students that are within the district currently. And that is the bulk of our increases. This year pertains to four students, two of which moved into the district, one of which is an anticipated outplacement, and one of which is going to a transition program this year. So those tuitions plus the transportation is by far the biggest swing in our budget, and so our budget is at a 12% increase. Our department, just to give you an overview, oversees all of the pre-K classrooms, so that's four pre-K classrooms. We also oversee all of those costs and related transportation costs. We also serve all of the students who have IEPs, pre-K through age 22, at the end of that academic year. We also oversee all of the services for students who have 504s, all of the students who are in any of our choice schools, our GOAT schools, and any outplacements. We also oversee all of the occupational therapy, physical therapy, special education services, as well as all of the examinations, evaluations that have to be provided to our students who have special education needs. We are also responsible for our nursing staff and the related expenses to all nursing, as well as any McKinney-Vento students. So those are students who are found to be eligible under the McKinney-Vento law, which pertains to homelessness. So as you can see, our department has a lot of expenses that fall under its umbrella. We are always just basically seeking to close that achievement gap between our students who have disabilities and their typical peers. Like, that's our charge. And so everything that we do is that singular focus, that singular goal of closing that achievement gap. Outside of the outplacements that I just referred to, our budget is stable. We actually have some decreases in certified personnel. This is largely due to staff that have resigned or retired and were able to hire at a different salary step, bringing down those costs. Our non-certified personnel, in other words, our paraprofessional salaries have also decreased. Contractual services, so this is object code 300, has increased. This is the typical increases that you would expect from inflation, if you will. This is Effective School Solutions. They're the ones that help, they're our collaborators with our three therapeutic programs. Also, children's therapy services, those are the ones that we contract with to do our occupational therapy and our physical therapy. We also have contract with CREC. They provide services for our deaf and hard of hearing students. So all of those have increased, as you would expect. Transportation, I'm gonna go through the next several pretty quickly, so our object code 510, 560, 563, both have all increased. Those are our transportation costs and our out-of-district placement costs, and those have increased because of what I had stated earlier around outplacements and the related transportation costs. So that's our non-public tuition plus our public tuition. We also, anytime a student decides to go to one of the schools in Waterbury, you know, Maloney, any of those, Womogo, we have to provide whatever special education services they require. So if they need a paraprofessional or occupational therapy, we also have to provide those services for them. Other than that, the rest of it's pretty boring. Our supplies have gone down. Our textbooks have had a slight increase. Library books has gone down. Other supplies, no increase or decrease. There are some increases in memberships, some professional improvement, field trips, and then I'm down to the budget examination around our medical services, and that has, it's expected to decrease by 2%. That's pretty speedy. Any questions? Yeah, let's sit here and narrate.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Very loud shoes. Good evening. I have a much smaller budget. I'm Jenna Roswell, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. The primary expense in this year's budget is the salary for a full-time math interventionist at Black Rock School. Based on the specialized skill set required, we've budgeted $56,554. You'll notice the increase is a little bit larger. That is due to a shift in some of the staffing from the previous year. So last year, the English language learner tutor was not included in my budget, and it is this year. I wanted to take a little bit more time to talk about the importance of funding the math interventionist position. The math interventionist will play a pivotal role in addressing the learning gaps in mathematics for students in kindergarten through third grade. The investment in a position is a proactive measure to ensure that our students have a strong mathematical foundation, which is critical to their future academic success and lifelong learning. Investing in a math interventionist is a strategic decision to enhance our instructional offerings and directly support the academic needs of our K3 students. By providing specialized intervention early in students' educational journeys, we're setting a stage for a lifetime of success in mathematics and the art. We believe that this role will not only benefit the individual students who receive direct intervention, but will also enhance the overall instructional capacity of our school. Currently, the way our positions are allocated in the curriculum department, we have a full-time math coach who has been assigned this year based on needs to intervention at Black Rock School. As you know, we have several, at least eight new state mandates, many of which are unfunded, and we need all of the support that we can possibly get for our teachers. So having the math intervention position added will allow us to, once again, have a math coach who could provide job-embedded professional development. The role of the mathematic coach will bring expert knowledge of best practices in math education, ensuring that our teaching methodologies are not only current, but research-based and proven for effectiveness. Job-embedded professional learning is predicted on the principle that teacher development is the most effective when it occurs within the context of the teacher's work environment. So I wanted to really differentiate between the importance of an interventionist and a math coach. They're equally important, but serve different purposes. So our math intervention position is to address the learning gaps in our students, but we also need to have the math coach, because we need to be providing our teachers with support and improving that tier-one instruction with the hopes that there'll be less students requiring math intervention. And it's proven that within the context, rather than, you know, pay for some experts to come in from the outside, having somebody who's familiar with Thomaston, knows our curriculum, our teachers, has the relationships, is far more effective. The coach will also foster a collaborative culture among K6 teachers, encouraging the sharing of ideas and strategies, and it's sustainable. It's much more sustainable than contracting with outside companies year after year. So that is the majority of the increase in the curriculum budget. Contracted services did increase, and this, again, is due to the unfunded state mandates. Very small budget, and anybody have questions? Thank you.
I'm Christina Kingsbury, the Principal of Thomaston High School and Pats High School. This year, we are requesting, allocated a 2.44% increase for some of the needs that we need for certain programs and instructional equipment that teachers have requested. Specifically, we have an increase around Power School University Training, in which our certified staff attend annually so that they can learn the back systems of essentially our school data system. We also have an increase due to the request of certain instructional supplies around Lenovo tablets for our students that are taking AP Computer Science classes. It requires a digital computer updating app, along with a request for some calculators for our geometry classes offered through Illustreat Math. We've also had an increase in our athletic department in regards to removing the container in the back of the high school and replacing it with a shed. That has been a request. It should be noted that there has been a decrease in the contractual salaries for administration, and there has been a decrease in the textbooks that have been requested on behalf of the staff that was under budgeted for in the past. Other important information to note is that the annual cost of Power School Naviance has increased due to their contracted services. Naviance is a system in which our seniors use so that they can upload their transcripts applying to colleges, and it's a communication system that all schools operate from. And further information that is important to note is that our, we have requested money for graduation this year in regards to purchasing 100 folding chairs so that we can eventually receive enough chairs for...
Excuse me, Christina, could you speak a little louder or move closer? Beth can't hear you. Thank you.
I have a big mouth.
And the last item that I wanted to note is that there was an increase of professional membership rates, Power School University Training, which I mentioned prior, and then specifically, the contracted services for substitutes for our building, as well as busing has increased as well. Any questions regarding the high school budget, Pats or Thomaston High School? Beth, did you have any other further questions? I'm not sure if you heard everything that I started discussing.
I didn't, but I'm just trying to read this quick.
Okay.
And there's $14,000. Is that an increase for professional development?
Yes, for Power School University Training. This year, the staff is going to Boston for that training. It's the online system that houses our data student information.
Is that the same group that was trained last summer in Nashville? Is this additional training?
This is, we're actually sending both myself, both administrators are going, along with our school counselor who does all the registration for the entire district. So it will be her second year, but two new spots for administration.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
How much is the class that's gonna cost three people $14,000?
Individual class, I'm not sure if I can get that information for you, Beth?
Last year, the class was $4,500 per student, or, yep, per individual. Per individual.
It's four and a half days.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a week long.
Can I ask another question about the athletic programming increase? What is the pay-to-play money used for, and where is that applied into the budget?
Most of the money that I took from the pay-to-play to offset the budget, I've used to offset the trainer position. So we're sharing a trainer right now with Terry Higginson. I think that's where the other goes, Terry Higginson?
Yes.
So I'm using, I use the pay-to-play line to offset that cost for that contract. I use a small amount to offset the referees for different sports, but the rest of that revenue that you'll see in that, offsetting that line comes from gate receipts from the basketball teams.
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, yes, thanks, Sean.
Hi, everyone. John Kazlak, Principal of BlackRock School. I always like to add or start in this narrative with a report of where we are with numbers. The unpredictable thing year to year at BlackRock is the number of new kindergarteners we have coming in. We have our pre-K students. That's predictable, but we don't know exactly how many kids in the community are coming into kindergarten that are not in our school system already. So, I've been at BlackRock 10 years. As a rule, we've had between 50 and 70 students roughly at all of our grade levels. As you can see, in first grade this year, we had 39 students. I stood here last year a little bit worried because in our lowest grade level, K-3, which was kindergarten last year, we had under 40 students, which was quite an anomaly from what we've had throughout my time at BlackRock. I'm happy to report that our numbers have rebounded in the kindergarten age group. This year, that's 23, 24, 53. So, we're back within normal range now, which is, which is good after that, like I said, after that anomaly that we had in first grade. Again, going into '24, '25, I would expect that our kindergarten numbers will remain somewhat steady with what we have right now, but we won't know that until later this spring. In terms of our teachers, we expect to have the same amount of classroom teachers next year. We do have this ripple sort of going through first grade. We have two classes of first grade, three classes of second grade, and three in third grade. Next year, we'll have two in second grade. Following year, we'll have two in third grade, and we'll go back to one and three classes in first grade. So, that's just a little, little report on where we are with numbers. Our budget increase forecasted for '24, '25 is about $129,000, or just under 6%. That is all essentially taken up by four lines, okay, which are not controllable in terms of, but not impacted by like instructional supplies and things like that. Our teacher salaries are projected to go up by about $61,000. Our non-certified salaries are expected to go up about $21,500. Our property services, we expect an increase of about $31,000. The majority of that is taken up with a roughly $21,000 project, which is to redo all the flooring in the hallway behind the cafeteria. We have lots of the tiles that are sort of popping in that particular hallway. We do have asbestos underneath, in the previous tiles that are underneath the existing tiles, and I believe in some of the glue that was used. So, that process in that hallway requires asbestos abatement, something like we did in the first grade hallway, or the blue hallway over the past couple of years. So, that, that's about a $20,000 project, and then our transportation costs are projected to go up about $21,000. So, those, those four things, the salaries, certified, non-certified, the flooring project and the transportation is a little over $130,000 of an increase, and that pretty much accounts for our total increase. The other lines, instructional supplies, cleaning supplies, the various things that we, we have within the budget to operate our school have gone up a little bit, down a little bit, just based on what our needs are for next year, but those are largely inconsequential relative to some of the bigger things that I just mentioned. Any questions?
So, one thing that I neglected to mention, the average wage increase for everyone is 2.85%. So, you know, some schools it went up, some went down based on where the teachers are, but that's the average wage increase for everyone. So, we will move on to the capital budget. So, the way the town's overall budget works, each, there's general government, public safety, public works, there's an education section. That's what we just talked about. The very last thing in the town's budget is capital, and it's money that gets transferred into a capital account that isn't, doesn't have to be used within one year. So, every year, every department submits capital requests. There's a committee that reviews them and makes a recommendation to the Board of Finance of how much to get transferred into capital for that year. So, what I'm going to present are the Board of Education requests from the... So, that is, I'll go down at the end, but it's capital. It's quite too long, isn't it? So, I'll just quickly give you the summary, and then if you have specific questions, the three principals are still here to talk about them. So, for BlackRock School, there's two requests. One is new matting for the playground. Right now, it's every year, the, you want to talk about it, Sean?
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to come up with something.
So, this is, this is an important one. I didn't put it in for this year because we can get by. I put it in for '25, '26. So, we've got, we've got to, at some point, do something about the playground at BlackRock School, the Rogazinski Playground. We have a mulch base now. Every year, we add to that to kind of keep it up to playground code, if you will, so it'll pass inspection, it'll be safe for the kids of the school, and for the community and surrounding communities to come in. It, it's at a depth now where it's pretty substantial, and what's been happening lately is we get new mulch every year, and I believe it was, it was this fall when we have rain, like heavy rain, it just washes right off the top because it's sort of above the thresholds around the side. So, we've got a couple of options we can do. One of the things that the custodial staff is looking into is a synthetic surface on the playground. Many of you have seen these in other places, and that's what this cost represents. Another option is to completely dig out the entire base of mulch that's in there and then replace it to an acceptable depth. It's, what is that, about 20 years old, the playground now? And so, it's wonderful. It was funded, I believe, through private contributions, but we're in a situation now where we have some ongoing costs. It costs at least $50,000 or $60,000. It would cost at least $50,000 or $60,000 to remove all of the mulch and then create a new base. So, we're just looking at our options, and we think that a good long-term investment as an option for sort of the flooring of the playground is a synthetic surface. So, that's what that presents.
What's the life expectancy on that?
I believe, I could find out, but I believe he said 25 years. I can find, I can confirm that.
It's a long time. We just put a playground in at work, so we used it.
Yeah. And we spend probably between mulch and the labor involved with spreading the mulch, at least $5,000 a year on the playground. Annual, yeah.
There's less accidents, there are less injuries, you know?
Yeah, and, right. And we've had, we've had increased, there's labor costs too associated with mulch, right? It, it gets swept away under the swings and under sort of the landing spots where the kids come off the apparatus, so that consistently needs to be moved back. We had to have all the custodians come in once or twice on Saturdays during the fall to, the, the mulch had actually gone over the edge, and there was mulch on the softball field, like through the fence of the softball. So, we had to get the guys in to do that, or else it would have just kept going. So, just looking at some different options for sort of the, the long-term health and viability of the playground.
George, just a question.
Yes, George.
Have you had any discussions with the Recreation Commission while contributing to annual maintenance?
Have not, have not. Something we could look at, but have, Francine, any?
Not about that particular playground, no. We haven't talked to them about that. It's mostly things like plowing that we asked them for, or sweeping and cleaning of the area, but never that playground.
Do you have a question?
At least though I've been here.
Used by all of the towns?
Yeah. Yes.
Is there any insurance mitigation option if you go with the math versus the...
That's a good question. We can look into that, too. I'm not sure, offhand.
We can get perm up, I'll find that out.
Is there any grant funding that you look at for the...
Another good question.
There's nothing that I know of that's out there right now for playgrounds. All of the money out there right now is for either HVAC or for school construction. This would not count as school construction.
So, so, all good questions. We had put this off, it's not an emergency right now, but also to explore, we, we have a number for a certain type of surface there, but we, we do want to explore a variety of options for this, which is why we didn't request it for right now. So, in, in the interim, we could, we could look into some of these questions as well.
Does that number include the removal of the existing material?
What I understand is, it's, it's a full-scale project. This, this one actually, this one actually might be, I believe this one is a synthetic matting that goes over some, some of the mulch, like it's removed to a certain point to where you can put the matting down. I don't know if that's the best option, honestly, because you still have that mulch that could erode and so forth underneath, but that's, that's what we have there. Like I said, Spencer and Brian are like, are looking into this, and they're going to continue to look into it over time. We just thought it would be good to have something sort of in there as something to look at and review at this point for the future.
And a lot of grants that we apply for do require, they do look at our five-year capital plan to see if it's something that's been requested, so that I always tell everybody put the request in because then when you go for a grant, you can show that you've been asking for it, so.
Yes.
So, is the mulch, is still part of you, we just, we did it with mulch, right? Took all the old job, you're ready to have the mulch again? It's not being outlawed right now?
No, 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 we can do that. We can do that, yeah.
So, you said it would be $50,000 to take off all the old mulch?
That's what I've been told, $50,000 or $60,000 minimum to just get rid of, you basically have to dig down to a certain depth and then replace it, yeah. And it's expensive. It's a, it's called, it's the things you learn, you know? It's called safety fiber. It's a certain kind of mulch that's deeper for, you know, use for children. And then, the, so, another project, again, this is, this is, this is a number that I was given to put in for the same reason, just to sort of have it there. We're also looking at redoing all of the flooring in our school to sort of complete the project where there's asbestos that needs to be removed. I was given $200,000 as a sort of a like a number for the future. We have the yellow hallway, you may be able to speak to this a little too...
Yeah, so, what we learned from the flood incident in the Blue Wing is that we have asbestos under most of our tile at BlackRock School. There's a small portion of the yellow hallway that isn't. It doesn't have any compromise, but it would have to come up because of the way that it's been intermingled. So, by putting this out at least a year, what we would be able to do is use the same program that we were using, and don't laugh, for the oil tank removal for reimbursement. It's been taking quite some time, but there are, there are funds out there for asbestos remediation and mitigation, et cetera, removal. And it would be through that same Department of Administrative Services fund, but I would say it's easily a year of begging through that process to get the 67% back on that dollar now. So, that's why it's not asked, being asked for sooner. It's a placeholder for now.
But that's the total cost of the project, not our contribution?
That is the total cost estimate without an engineer of the project. We would, if we were going to go forward, I'd need to put, put out a little bit of money about, I would take somewhere in the twenties, twenty-some thousand dollars to get an engineer. So, that doesn't include engineering, and that's not the exact cost. So, once we get it engineered, then I can get you a better number, but we'd get 67% back on that.
With the filing for that grant, is it a one-time thing, or can we accompany with it the expense from the insurance that was accrued due to that, the asbestos from the claim?
That grant is a going-forward reimbursement grant, so we would have to have a new project. I can't get reimbursed for anything that's already been paid for because it has that stipulation that says, just like with the oil tank grant, we cannot go out to bid or make any kind of professional move on the project before they give us the grant. So, it would have to be for only the flooring that we were, that we haven't touched yet.
What are we looking for with the red hallway?
Do they need to be removed yet, too?
Yeah. What Spencer and I have been talking about as well, that's holding the place for yellow because yellow would be the less expensive because it's, if you stood in the yellow hallway, I think some of, some of you were with me when we went and did the tour, you can literally see a little bit of a change in the flooring because we had the front that was added on later or changed. So, the yellow hallway would be less expensive than red. Red would be in the ballpark of what we paid for blue, or what I should say was the total cost for the Blue Wing. So, that's why that $200,000 is, is a ballpark because we really are just trying to make it a placeholder. The goal would be to completely remediate the asbestos flooring or the material that contains asbestos under the flooring at BlackRock Schools. If we're going to go for the grant, I would be putting in all of the hallways, not just yellow.
The reason why we have the, that one piece of hallway in the operating budget is because the tiles are starting to pop.
They're starting to pop.
In the corners, the pieces are...
And that's user play?
No, that's just student age, and I think it's the way they redid the flooring.
So, when the, so, my understanding, again, I've been told this about 20, 25 years ago when they did the last flooring job at BlackRock School, they did not, they elected not to do the, all the asbestos removal when it made. So, we have tiles over tiles now. And then, we found when we did the blue hallway project that there are some uneven spots, there's various things underneath the floor that were sort of patchworked over the years, and, you know, as the time goes on, we get little uneven spots in the floor, and then that causes tiles to pop. So, it goes. Thank you.
So, Beth, and anybody else that's listening in, I don't know if you can hear all the conversation, but the two BlackRock projects are not requests for this year. Those are for the following year, and John is working on getting more exact quotes on those, but we want to get a placeholder so everyone's aware that those projects are coming. So, you want to come up and talk about your two, Mrs. Bernier, talk about the two Center School projects that are requests for some of the upcoming budget?
Hi, Jen. There's two capital requests for Center School. One is in the Jamaican exit doors. We've noticed that the hinges are not completely flat, flush to where they need to be, and the door doesn't close exactly the way it should. So, it's, could potentially cause a security concern or a heating concern or something like that. And those are the doors that, as you're leaving from the interior of the school, like you're looking out at the gym, it's those two that go out towards Asa Winkie's property. So, it's those gym doors that need some replacement at approximately 12 hours. It's just in the capital improvement area. And the second is the exterior painting of Thomaston Center School. It has been a long, long time since Thomaston School, Center School has been painted on the outside. We've done some paint work in the inside, but because, you know, it's, those pillars are really tall and need some special equipment, and we need some, you know, painting work on the exterior to make it, make it shine bright again. So, those are our two capital requests. Any questions on those?
So, with the painting, would that be something you're subcontracting out?
Yeah, we, we would, we would need to do that because they would need a special lift. It would need to be scraped, it would need to be done properly again, yes.
Those two numbers are 12 and 23, Mr. Sir. 12 and 23, are those solid numbers? You got quotes, or that's just...
Those are quotes that, that Chris had gotten from us.
12,300 for painting, that's the whole outside, do you know something?
I believe it is the pillar work, I don't know if it's the, the trim. It seems pretty low for the trim, but I know that for some reason...
It's just, you said it's...
Yeah, yeah.
And that's need-based, so some areas don't need it, so they're not getting...
It all needs it, but it would, but it would be probably cost prohibitive at this point to say...
So, does it prioritize the...
Yeah, yeah. We recommend that another $150,000 towards the capital part of the class. We recommend that another hundred, fifty thousand dollars towards the capital part of the class.
This is obviously something that's going to be ongoing capital. Is this something that we should have a ongoing reserve?
So, Rich, Mike, are you saying then that we would fill in the twenty-three thousand going each year forward? Or, or...
It would have to be the twenty-three, if that's what we're doing every ten years, but you might want to build to that.
Couple grand a year.
Okay.
I mean, you have a plan, right?
Got it.
It's the same thing, I mean, you just need to add these list of computers and parking lot ceiling. Those are recurring expenses over one period of time that's just...
So, there's a few town departments that do that, that is, that request capital funding for a reserve without anything specific identified. For example, Town Hall itself requests ten thousand into a capital reserve, so that when something breaks, you don't have to come back to the Board of Finance and say, you know, I need six thousand dollars to fix this heater, or whatever. So, it's something that probably each school should start requesting a capital reserve for repair maintenance spending.
Can we request a six percent reserve now?
This is something...
And Frank is on that committee, so we have to get it through him.
The money we got to use for, to go towards like the mulch, where we got the haul. Because it would be, I mean, because they'd be getting, and you'd be running, it's like with smaller projects, need to be done. Something like that, it worked out. How much would you have to put away for a hundred thirty-four thousand dollars for the mulch? To make a dent, maybe we have more money to prepare. We must be doing thirty-five grand a year.
So, can I just clarify, we're asking, well, you as the Board of Finance are suggesting that each school add another line item in, say like five thousand for capital reserve every year going forward?
Well, yes, but you have to decide. You can't, you can't start looking at anything in reserve now.
Right, I understand that, but, you know, for our ten-year plan that we're working on, something that's ten years away, we could start the reserve for it in the next budget.
Right, yeah.
And what happens when that budget gets cut? Where does that reserve go? It just gets cut, because that's definitely going to get lost.
If it's in there, it's in there.
Right, but if you say you got to cut your budget a hundred thousand dollars, that's the first thing that's going to go, because that's not student-centered, and that's something we can't afford to keep socking away money for.
You don't have to turn it away, you can come to us every year.
We do come to you every year.
So, if it's in, if it's in a...
It would be like our two percent fund together. You can just leave it up to us to make the decision on a yearly basis. It's easier to manage if you had a reserve.
So, if we did that, then, let's say...
But, but again, to answer your question specifically, choice is yours.
Yeah.
We don't have, right?
Right, but...
My question has to do with the longevity of it. So, let's say we put in to capital, let's say we make a plan, which we're going to have an actual formalized plan by the spring. And we have that formalized plan, and we know that we should be doing this repair and that repair over time, or this should be the annual, or every three-year kind of repair, and we make that request. If we make it, how often do we have to make it every year? Or do we say the first time, we'd like to have this be filled with a thousand dollars, this, this account or this line item, forever? Like, how, how, I've never asked for that, so I'm trying to figure out, how does one ask? So that, Roxie's question, I think, is better answered. Do we have to ask every year for that same dollar amount? Or do we ask once and it just keeps getting added?
Once you build the reserve plan, which is spectrified over cost, right? You know what you need to put away in a reserve, and you make a determination, right? So, and Roxie, I mean, it's the same thing whether we, if we cut your budget this year, some of those things might get lagged.
Well, I, I know you're not doing all of those things, so I get that, but this is kind of a different thing. No, the capital committee.
Right, but what I'm saying is like, you know, it doesn't matter whether it's in a reserve plan or not in a reserve plan collectively. The board of education has to figure out, like, what they're going to spend, I want, right? So, I would encourage you to have some type of reserve plan, so you don't have to try and knock off a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for something that you might need, right? Whereas if you're taking fifty thousand, you're putting aside for things that you're going to need in the future, and then maybe asking for some other dollars for things that are more emergent, that's one way to look at it. It's your budget.
So, Rich, for clarification purposes, we can't put a reserve away without the town. The only way that we can put money away without the town is to wait until the end of the year and see if we have a surplus, and then that can go into the two percent account. So, when you're saying we have to decide on a reserve, do you mean we are creating our own reserve fund? Or are you saying we are asking the town capital committee for that money?
We put it like with the place department, the fire department, the ambulance board. They submit their budget with some other line item to put it into a reserve for that.
But yes, it does go through capital, it does go through capital, those are capital requests. And to answer your first question about, can you just submit every year? Yes, because it changes. So, the example I usually give is the assessors' rebal. So, it's something we know we have to do every, well, it used to be every ten years, every five years. So, he puts in an amount, and he says it's going to cost two hundred thousand dollars over the next five years, so he requests that much. As the number of properties moves and the cost, it, it changes. So, he'll adjust his request to, you know, to adjust that reserve, but it's something that he requests every year.
But once it's been established that this is going to be a reserve to get to that amount of two hundred thousand dollars, I understand the adjustment based on what reality is going to be, but does it, does it...
Still have to ask, yes.
Continue to get funded each year, or could the funding stop?
It could stop, it could stop. Or it could be reduced. So, the library always asks for more than the capital committee's comfortable with. So, theirs has been reduced over the years, but they receive something every year into a reserve for the, I think they always ask for money to replace their automatic doors.
But the money the departments get, like the fire department, this is where it's at, we're leaving out price. They do not spend that, that stays with them for their, for that reason. So, I couldn't bring it, Rich, but...
But yeah, that's the worst thing.
We put five thousand away, it's up to us to keep it. I know we got to cut it somewhere else, but it's up to us to keep it.
So, so understand, the only way that we, the Board of Ed, can put five thousand dollars away is to create a line like George suggests. We put five thousand dollars in it, and we never spend it, so that at the end of the year, we're guaranteed a surplus of five thousand dollars. That's the only legal way the Board of Ed can carry money in a reserve. We have to get it to the end of the fiscal year as a surplus, and then put it into the two percent account. We can't have a line that, that we keep filling unless it's going to be through capital, where the town would say, okay, this line belongs to the Board of Ed. Then we can do that.
And that's so different than any other department. That's exactly how every department operates, it's all through capital. Any reserve we're talking about is all through capital.
Okay, thank you.
So, even if we have to deal with per school, like just you were asking for the event number?
Yes, except then when something big comes up, there's a fight over who's money is.
I also think that there are varying expenses and, and different systems that are running in the buildings. So, if I were to create a long-term plan, I would want it to be by building, by facility, so that it matches. Because there are things at Center School that are going to cost different than the things that are here at the high school, because we have different systems and different ages.
And look, you can't do this now, you don't have to be in the commission.
Correct.
You have to build a reserve plan.
Yes, this time next year.
Which evaluates the lifetime of, what are the critical items? What is there existing?
Which we will have by the end of the school year.
Mechanical, rebuilding.
Yes, yes.
So, we're going to have a facilities and an educational plan by the spring. So, that will allow us to populate this, this time next year, where we'll be able to make educated requests. No problem, yes, okay. Now that, and now that I know it's, it's viable, we'll attempt to have it come to fruition.
And we're trying to get every department to do this, because ultimately, we want to switch to a capital logic. You know, we can't have a huge spike one year, it just, it's not fair to that.
Second year, four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, right? I mean, frankly, I'd be surprised if the capital improvement gave you that, no?
All right.
But it's psychologically, it's a lot easier for everyone to look at a figure of, say, forty thousand dollars a year for every year, than, than having the lips on your side.
Thank you.
Is it too late to add one of those slide items to the page?
We don't have the proper information, I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel it would be appropriate. Thank you.
So, on behalf of the high school, we had many capital requests. The first one, which is the greatest priority right now for the high school building, is our heat pump. The heat pump that we currently have is about over twenty-five years old of age. According to Spencer Luthy, who's our head custodian of the district, he has shared that essentially this is our backup heat for the entire building, and it needs to be replaced as soon as possible. It was important to note that right now it's taking about six, estimated sixteen-week delivery to have this pump brought to the high school and installed. So, for that capital request, we are requesting fifteen thousand dollars for this current year. Any questions about that particular request?
Two, two things, are you talking about this year?
That would be an urgent request, I'm not...
So, you should bring that before the Board of Finance. And second question is, are there any grant dollars, or are you going to pass it?
No, we were looking at it as part of the HVAC grant, and it doesn't qualify. We do have a second pump that's running solar right now, that will, that we're limping with. But if that one conks out, then that's why it's urgent. So, if you'd like, we can bring this as a separate request for, for now, when we meet in February, we can say for this fiscal year. But what we were trying to do was get it funded through capital, because we know that we're already over in our operating, so I, I don't think we're going to find any loose change in operating to get that fifteen thousand issue.
Did you say was the...
Estimated delivery? Sixteen.
Sixteen, so four months, just about behind for summer.
Yes, yeah. If we ordered it today. If we ordered it today.
It's not going to help us this year. We go ahead and prove it, a month from now, it's not going to help us this year.
The second request we had at the high school was a recommendation shared on behalf of Fire Marshall for new stove hoods in the culinary classroom. Right now, he said that this is critical that we put that in for student safety and staff safety. They currently use gas-range stoves, and having that hood would increase safety if needed for extinguishing.
There are no hoods there now, zero hoods.
So, right now, they're using open gas range.
There's, there's a system to put out, to turn off the gas, but there's no hood.
With that hood, is there going to be setup of a service in the cleaning, or is it some, or is it...
We would have to service them, just like we service all the other hoods, we have to decrease every year.
And our third request for the upcoming school year would be the sealant to the rear parking lot. Right now, the sealant is quoted to be thirteen thousand dollars, three hundred and fifty. That's a project that, again, Spencer wanted me to bring forward to admitting, to request the funding for, it's needed. We also have a request for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, there's three different ones, just forward planning, the epoxy coating, and the maintenance shop, to decrease any work-related injuries, as well as to keep up with the maintenance of the flooring as well. Power track for the gym leechers, to reduce the labor of the custodians that have to essentially take them down and put them back every single sporting event or class event that we have, or assembly in the gymnasium, quoted about thirty-one thousand dollars. And the biggest capital request that we have next to the computers for the two school years ahead is essentially the auditorium seating. It's been a little under twenty years that they've been replaced. They are a little worn out, they could use a new complete overhaul renovation. That quote does include the installation, the chairs, and then the labor that goes into that for over the summer, for that to be a big project.
Does that reupholstering exist, or is that replacing?
Replacing, yeah. The final request that we had on behalf of the high school is the business computers and the CAD computers. Right now, the computers that we have in the business classroom, they don't have the equipment attached to it that is required for some of the programming for it to run. It's over ten years old that the computers have been purchased in the business classroom, and we're requesting fifteen for CAD programming in the future.
So, the Chromebooks don't have the software that the class teaches?
Chromebooks facilitate using Google, not the Microsoft software that we would need.
Question, on the rear parking lot, high school, does that include repainting or not?
It's the ceiling and the asphalt.
It's not repainted all the way? Obviously, the number for the hoods, is that a number, is that...
Yes, that's installation, yeah. And that, again, was a recommendation of the Fire Marshall. He had shared a letter on behalf of Spencer that is part of our capital request.
I guess pulling a large of hoods would not be a good idea.
More pushing with the gas.
It's also more realistic, it's more what one would use in the culinary world. The other, the epoxy flooring was also discussed by the Fire Marshall, because of the type of work that's going on in that area, the epoxy flooring would be a much better flooring to have underneath that type of work area.
Is it where they stand, or the whole floor?
The whole floor.
The whole floor. And it's not just maintenance, the interior is that way as well, so it's, it's a highly traveled area, it's not just a, you know, plaza.
So, are the epoxy floors slip-resistant and stuff?
It would be slip-resistant. We installed this when we had the flood at Black Rock. It was installed in the two spaces that we knew had water or heavy use. The water, we had like washer, two washers in that space, so it was put in there, and it's, it's amazing flooring.
It's been a tape for a long time, because I've seen epoxy floors that have sand, or some slippery floors.
There haven't been any complaints about slipping?
We haven't received any complaints about it.
The other place for the epoxy flooring in is right at an exit, an exterior exit at Black Rock. So, we would know by now for sure if there was anything, that's our delivery entrance and exit.
It's the exterior of the club?
Round the back.
A lot of people use it, it's used a lot?
Yeah, that's where you get your deliveries, that's where people come in and out of for drop-off of materials. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
So, that's the overall operating and capital budgets. Anybody have any other questions that we can...
Somebody want to make a motion? Yeah, so we can get some kind of discussion going?
Steve Carr, motion to approve possible Board of Education, actually vote?
We're actually voting, making a motion to vote to approve what we just heard, please.
Steven Carr, motion to vote upon the Board of Education twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five operating budget and the twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-nine capital budget.
Matt Van Almer, second.
Opening it to discussion.
Are you suggesting line item with the, with all of the department heads to find out why there, why certain items have certain costs? Are there, are there certain items that are, are of concern that you can more explanation on?
I'm concerned about fourteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-two to be extended on, possibly, I'm concerned. I'm concerned about fifteen thousand dollar increase in athletic or coaches. Just find things that line by line. So we can sit at the department heads, go between them by my line, send it to the board of finance and go to us. Drop that six percent. And we don't have to do it right now. We should have a meeting and do it.
I agree.
Well, I mean, isn't that what this meeting was when they were up there explaining it? Couldn't we question them on the ground?
Well, we can question them now. They're right here.
I'm questioning the fourteen thousand for spinning, go to Boston. Questioning the fifteen thousand for coaching. I'm also questioning the JV coach, could we just power the rest? This is the third one, the RLA JV coach, could we just power the rest also?
I will speak to the Power School expenditure. I had met with Christina and advised her that she should put that in because our Power School pro is no longer working for us. So we have to train people to do what one person used to do for many years. And without sending them to Power School University, they will never be able to do what needs to be done to do all of the hand scheduling that's done with this small population here at the high school. So it was my suggestion and in fact Christina reduced the amount that I suggested that she should put in. So she went from a much larger group of sending people back for year two to a smaller group where she described, you'll have one person going for year two, two people going for year one. So that is a lower expense than what I was suggesting she do. And Power School is a building, it's called Power School University because you go and select your courses. So you can go back every year. You're learning a different tract or you're learning, you're going from intermediate to an expert level. In this case, we're focusing in on scheduling and things that have to do with a high school. So those three people need to go to Power School next year in order for us to function well.
It can't be done online and serve in like classes?
The Boston one is the cheapest one. There was an option to do something in the past that was called a power user group and they don't have them anymore. So all you have is Power School University. It's four and a half days. So when we sent them to Nashville, that was the closest one we could come up with last year in short order. Boston will be our closest, so we won't have to pay even higher than that for travel expenses. Cheaper to get to Boston. But they usually have one in Boston or the Boston area every year. Just last year, we needed to move quickly because our scheduler was on their way out as we were trying to build a schedule. So we need to send people to Nashville in a hurry. But I would predict that we'd be sending at least one person to Power School University for the next few years. At least one person so that we can get the fine tune down.
I'm just going to say we should have a seven to six percent. If we look back and fine tune what we can fine tune because it's going to be cut no matter what. I'm not going to give a six percent. I didn't say that. It's not up to me to cut. It's up to the department heads. They need to look, I mean, I'm not saying they need to do a good job, but we're going to get cut. So either we're going to be surprised with your cut or at least we can take a little bit of a burden off of the board of finances.
All right. Do you think if you cut it two percent, that then the board of finance will approve it? Or do you think then the board of finance is just going to cut another two percent? Yeah, but isn't that what the teachers, like that's what they've done. Like if you look at the budget for everything that they want, it's probably a seventy-five percent increase, right? No, I don't think they're shooting for the stars. I mean, the line by line increase is minimal.
With respect to the, you know, the meeting that we had, the executive meeting and stuff, there was, there's still, you know, that's affecting, you know, proportions of the, you know, which is a greater percentage. So that's, you know, that's has to be taken into consideration. It's not, six percent is. Oh, no, no, it's discussion. We're having a discussion about it. I'm not saying, you know, you're wrong. I'm just asking. Give your opinion. I want to be able to give my cue, that's all.
I watch the conference, I have many statistics, I've watched every government conference, I hear. We have to at least give a try as a big ask.
I don't think we need to do it now. I'm not saying they won't expect it, something, but I think this would be done sooner.
Well, Frank, to your point, what I would really like to know is what we should be coming forward with each year. That's always been my desire, to know what can be afforded so that we can not bother having these plans the way that we have them.
It's not a matter of what we can do. I mean, what we're going to come up with. It's a matter, we're not completely, this is the number, therefore stay with that number. Then we go on to the board of finances. You want to do it as a two enough or whatever. I'm not the one that should have told you. I'm just making a suggestion.
Like give them a target. What's the number you want them to hit?
We can't do that to the whole budget.
Yeah, we have to look at, we have to look at the entire.
When you talk about like the reserve items and stuff that's not available this year, is there something that if within this budget, something might be a, put into that reserve budget as an anticipation as far as, okay, it's not something that we can do this year, but it's going to need to next year or within the next few years? Can it be moved to that line item this year?
That's really, really, I mean, I think you have to look at what's critical, right? You've heard there are some increases on, say, on pupil services, right? So I don't want anything here. I just feel like that's almost not a share in a lot of ways. You got to work from there and look around, see what else could be.
I absolutely say.
As an example, as an example.
And but part of, right, part of your job is if we came in at a one percent, your job is to make sure that that's what we can do, right? I mean, if it's like, it's not saying it's like, oh, you know what, we're, we're under budget this year. We could be saving you five hundred thousand, but we're going to give, we're going to ask for a two percent increase.
You have to remember, we answer to taxpayers.
Absolutely.
So it's not even up to us there. You know, obviously, if the taxpayers get a one percent increase, it's not going to be in your perspective, it's not going to be in your. But if we present a six or nine percent budget to the taxpayers, you know that they're going to reject the budget. But that's really what it comes down to. And that's the real, that's the realistic, that's the fact.
I, I.
And just, and we know that, I've been sitting on board of finance for over a decade. And that's just the fact of how it works in our town. If you want to put in, if you feel you need to put in a six percent, understand that we will go to referendum. The town will vote for it and it'll be turned down. And if it's turned down, we can't increase the budget. We can only decrease it. Which means we're only going to be able to cut. That's all we have, our.
Which is what we did last year. Which is.
Right, and it was very difficult and we'll go through that again and it'll be even harder if we start at six percent. So what Frank is saying is, you know, it's just, it's history. That's what we know we're facing. I, I, I understand, you know, my, my son went through the entire school system here. And I understand how important this is. I understand how important the school system is and the budget is for our community. Even for the taxpayers who might vote it down, they don't, maybe they don't understand how important it is. But the bottom line is, is we're not going to be able to pass a six percent budget right now. It's never happened in a decade plus that I think it is.
And I think if you look, go back and look at what the historical, including budgets have been in this town and you unpack what the town side and the board of ed side is, you will be able to answer the question. What should the number be?
Let's hear some other opinions down there, please. You guys are saying, no, don't vote on this. So where do you want to see cuts coming from?
Well, right now I agree with Frank. I'd rather us look, sit down, look at it and figure out where we can cut than to send it somewhere and fail. That we can only get cuts from there. And then we're going to have to figure out what even bigger cuts there.
Where are you suggesting these cuts come from though? Like we've looked at this budget. We've had it since Wednesday and we saw the presentations. So I'm going to say, Jen, you got to get rid of that math interventionist. I understand why you're asking for it, but I don't think that is something we can afford to do this year. I understand the need, the lean need, I do. But to bring in a new position like that?
It's not a huge position though. This was a position that we had the past few years and we no longer have. And some of the interventionists are also our teachers. And as our EL numbers increase, we need to provide that service. And we've been using a hard staff and we're really, really tight staff and we don't have the ability.
I, I get that, but I, I don't think you can bring it back.
We had a shared one with Center School. Why can't we go back to that kind of model? Or, and I hate to say this, but why can't some of the coaches start coming down?
They're doing it now. They are. That's what they're doing. Your math coaches being the math that you're best right now.
You know, we worked small this year to have an ELA and a math coach and I get the whole. But she's the director of curriculum. She can do the curriculum and then they can do math coaching and then you can partner with the kids. I mean, that's something I could do.
We also have positions that are currently vacant. We've done that before where if something's vacant, we don't fill it because we don't want to lay people off.
I don't want to lose staff. I don't, that's, that's not where I want to come from. Like Braxi said, that's a position that's being reintroduced so we're not losing somebody that we have. Because that's not like where, where I don't think anybody on this board wants to go. That's important to us. But there's something like Frank said, the athletics, it went up significantly. And we have, you know, coaches, we have the two seventh and eighth grade boys, coaches that are coaching basketball and, you know.
Someone works out or jumps a hundred percent. It went from forty-one to eighty-three hundred.
What's the department for summer? Was it, is it special or is it?
No, it's custodian.
Oh, excuse me. Custodial summer, sorry.
That's just to get to what actual is. The budget last year was not actual. It wasn't correct. It was the, the actual summer work that was done was about the eight thousand. So that's.
Because they, they work the whole summer at eight hours a day and that's not what this budget is for.
Now, Grace, there was a couple of items that you had mentioned about, like you moved to a different line item and stuff. I know you mentioned a couple of other others that they might want to, might identify some of the larger targets that might be concerns.
Well, I think each of the schools mentioned that the contracted services increased for subs. And that was because many years ago, we hired the subs and paid them as if they were staff, so they were under salaries. But we use a service now. It was Kelly Services and now we've recently switched to ESS. So it is a contracted service, so it rightly belongs under contracted services. So that's why those, that three hundred line had the increase in each school.
Is that also a result of why the staff or costs or benefits were, it was only one percent because it was pulled from them?
Yep, a little bit, yep. Yeah, the only, I think the only unfilled position is a school psychologist.
Right now, we have a school psychologist. We're about to fill a social studies position and we have three care positions.
Unfilled.
Off the top of my head.
Four as of today.
Four as of yesterday. Three that are posted. And we have two coaching positions right now. They're unfilled. Middle school softball and varsity tennis boys.
How about, how about just looking at the construction assembly for the problem with the Minnesota summer work?
Summer? We usually have two in this building and one in the other two buildings each.
You know, my point, I don't understand, the buildings aren't being cleaned. It doesn't have to be done as much coverage came and all of those. Why do you need three more people to work in the buildings?
Because Frank, as you know, from the industry that you're in, the type of work that we do in the summer is stripping everything down, making sure that we have everything cleaned to a level of thoroughness. Like stripping out lock or stripping the floors of the wax, putting down the wax, et cetera. You need manpower and you need it in a very short time. In this building, we can't do as much in the same way because this building is used for all of the summer programs, including the rec department. So this building, there is still toilets, you know, there's still bathrooms being cleaned and trash being emptied. Depends on which week. For about five or six weeks in the summer, this entire building and classrooms in one of the wings is being used, including the gym. So you've got a lot of people wandering this building, peeing in a lot of bathrooms and putting their trash into a lot of trash cans.
This is not a point for the board of finances. What you're doing right now is evaluating your budget, which we have no say over line items at all. We don't cut line items. We're not going to deep dive into your budget. The overall budget. And I for one am going to leave because we have no say in what you guys are doing right now. I, I suggest you have a workshop. We bring people in and maybe on a Saturday morning or something, you spend some time together. But we're not going to, we're not going to be making your decisions.
We're not asking you to do that, George. We asked you here to listen. So if you would like to leave at this point, we thank you for coming.
Right now, you're deciding, you're talking about line items. We're, we're not talking about line items. So, yeah.
Thank you for coming and for your input.
Thank you.
George, you want to take something home?
Yeah. Thank you.
Come on, we can send you a bill then.
Matthew Needham, there might be cookies left.
What I would like to ask the board, because we are concerned about this number, I'm hearing it from, you know, a good number of you, one way or the other, however you stand, if it's whatever too much is, your thresholds might vary. But the work that's gone into this budget is such that I would want to have a number from you sooner than later because we're going before the board of finance the day after our February board meeting. So we do have time, but to get together and have us all sit and contemplate things that we can't further at this moment, get you information about or feel that maybe we are not sounding like we're reasoning with you but begging you. I would much rather have the board say, look, this is all we want to say. We don't want to see a budget of more than this. Give, give us that threshold. We will get there. None of us are going to be happy. Those that are setting the threshold, how you look at it, right? It's just, it's not a happy place to be. And, and we knew this because we were doing a lot of budget buying down and we have hit the crescendo now. We've been buying down budgets and buying down budgets and buying down budgets where now it's, it's caught up to us. So we knew we were going to make it to a very high number. And we were very happily at the four percent mark in anticipation of this day until we had our placements that moved us to six. So please understand, we're still coming with a high budget, higher than what has been approved in the past. We were originally coming with about four and now we're at a six. So we need to figure out how to find where we need to go. But from the board tonight, I'm going to speak on behalf of my team. The team has worked very hard, the team that you don't see in this room are my teachers and my other staff that can contribute to this. For us to go back to them and say, we're not sure where the budget stands, I think would be quite frustrating and disheartening. But if we came back and said, look, the board made a decision last night, it's a cut of this and we're going to go find that money. Whether you say it's a dollar amount or you say it's a percentage that you want us to not exceed, we will do that. Three and a half.
That's with the, with the additional, I, I.
We have to be realistic.
I, I, I understand that.
We do. Now we have the time to think about it and discuss it. When it comes down to the budget and the referendum and everything that goes on, it's quicker process.
I understand it and I agree and I, I understand the best numbers, taking pencils is very important. Based on the understanding that four percent is a great, great place to be. But with our executive session, we had to discuss and. we had to discuss an item that is justifying fifty percent of that four percent. I, I, I don't know, I, I understand, and, and we do need to discuss it, and, and everything like that, but I, I think to go three percent...
I'm sorry, four and three quarters is your number, back, or then we can set that to four, right? I think there's been, I know they've done the work, I know you guys have done the work, but I'm not, I'm not... No, no, six percent, we're not gonna knock that. And we need to, I know you guys do it voluntarily and maybe, or, I mean, I don't, it's hard, but you have to do it, you have to force it. There's one way or the other, I mean, I don't know what can you do, anything will help, and I know it's hard. I'm not saying you guys didn't do your job, you guys know six percent, it's that simple.
I, I think in a place to try to respect everyone in every position, our, ours as Board members, administration, and superintendent, trying to expedite this is, is very important.
Yes.
And, um, it's important for us and everyone involved around this. Um, I don't wanna be here till midnight, but I think we, if, maybe we could agree to set some time to discuss some parameters amongst, amongst us, and maybe set up a workshop relatively, relatively quickly, but give them time to go through that, but yet still...
Can you just give us a baseline? I would really appreciate a baseline. We, I promise you, we will come back to that baseline. I don't wanna come here and have my staff have to beg for line items.
Four, 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 that we're, where people would be happy with, or...
Or something where we have to, like, what's the number she drew?
I mean, she was saying four, and we ended up at six, I mean, we say, yeah, me in the middle.
Say five?
That's right.
Okay.
I'm not gonna try to... I'm not, I'm not...
I mean, most of it is from the one thing, I get that. So we're asking, I guess, it would be one percent on the budget, right?
By going to four, that's half, the budget would go to that, which is, that's what I'm saying now.
Two and a half percent increase is just... But we have to cover the other two.
The budget increase was twelve percent.
Yeah, what is that out of the hole?
So it would be one percent from this side, and we leave that over there. Does that make sense?
Does, yeah, exactly, one percent less than what we anticipated, right?
We would have to cover, we'd have to cover the four and three percent, because we would be cutting one percent from the original amount, but then we'd be taking that three percent, that, that two percent that blew up, and cutting it from the general budget as well. So we're really coming back to you with what would have been a one percent increase.
Are we at a flat six?
Do you understand what I'm saying? So if you give us a three, it'll be a one percent increase.
So magic number five?
I know the number's four and three four. It's something, it's like every case, one thousand nine hundred to ninety-nine thousand, they see one point seven five.
Rex, if you're looking at zero percent on the other type of budget, the essential less budget is going down, period. I, is that, that's what I'm asking you.
I understand that, we have contracted costs that we can't control. But, but like you said, the town isn't gonna support six, they're not gonna support four point seven five either.
They're not, that's what I'm...
So, I, why are we saying come in at four seven five, why aren't we going down to four?
Because then, then we're asking too much of our department.
Unless they still were told that that's what we have.
If they're forcing you, where does that come in?
I, 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 I understand the frustration, that's why I'm trying to, you know, put it in a realistic realm. Um, we've got two percent that, this, you know, if, if a happy place would have been four percent, now, of, of, of an average, normal place of, of presentation, we are stepping in at a half of that, with, with any possibility of we keep it at four.
If I can put you into a reality check, so, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars would eliminate what we talked about, that's causing the two percent increase, give or take, to three hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So that's the minimum to cut to get down to four.
Well, that was because we were at eight percent or nine percent, so...
We're looking to cover what the increase was.
You're saying the three eighty-nine is that one increase?
Is that legal?
And what are we totally asking for?
We were totally originally asking for four change, and then it became six change because of that extra.
So if we cut three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, we get us down to four percent?
A little over four percent, right Tracy? She's checking the numbers now.
Uh, to get us to three point nine nine, we have to cut four hundred and ninety-six thousand.
We'd have to cut almost five hundred thousand to get to three point nine, three point nine nine.
Not including the contract.
Remember that we're gonna swear any votes, but we're, we're going realistic with that one, look. Four point seven five, it's a good number. If individuals came to the executive session, they know what's going on, and might now want to do the same thing, they wanna try to let it go through, townspeople are gonna go with it. Let's go with that. No, no, what's gonna happen tomorrow, it's gonna get going on, it's not gonna bounce, be serious.
So I have another question, so we're looking at the total general cost, it says sixteen million eighty-six, right? And it says the twenty twenty-four town allocation, I mean, the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget request goes up to nineteen million, so it was a three million dollars, so why are we talking go?
No, 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 you have to compare the two budget request columns and the two town allocation columns. Because the town allocation columns take into account any revenue.
So if we get any grant money or anything like that, how...
Okay, got it, alright.
So you're comparing the sixteen eight to the seventeen nine? Yeah.
Got it, that's what I thought, right? So we're gonna have one?
Oh, Beth?
Yeah. I don't know, I'll touch this up.
He's connecting from the, uh, from the TV.
At the air? Okay, wait, what were you saying? Oh, oh, that's because we turned the TV on. You're, you're on the laptop right now.
Now's the perfect time.
Wage, wage increases?
Wage increases?
Wage increase is about two percent.
Two percent.
The wages is two, the special ed budget is another two, so that's four you can't touch. So then if we go from six to four, you just wipe out everything that wasn't way decreased, or the special ed situation. If you go to four point seven five, then you get point seven five, worth the wait all, that's the increase.
Alright, since there's a line number, it's gonna come back to us and go from there. And that's why I think you should put them ahead and go line by line. I think we should be doing that tonight, just to get it going. Here's the bottom line. That's right, yeah, we're realistic. I think four point seven five is a good number to shoot to. It's not a steady one.
I, yeah, I would, um, I would, you know, maybe just ask, listen, understanding the situation. Ideal number which is under four, if it's almost unrealistic, um, understand, um, you can only ask, unfortunately, to determine what's necessity, what's not, and let us do the best we can. It's, it's, I, I mean, if that's under four, it's under four, if it's over five, it's over five. It's what we gotta present, and we're gonna have to do what we gotta do. We can't, we can't, you're the rug out...
Yeah, from beneath the, I don't even start. John, as a, I don't know, I can speak to the team later. We can need, we can come up with cuts, we can always come up with cuts, right? And we, but we don't want, we, we have things that are essential to students, we have things that are essential to adults, you know? No, 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 what I'm saying is, um, we can do that, I think, this is what we do throughout the budget process, we've done it already in the past, we've done it past this point. Um, we just, I think what you're trying to say, Frank, we need an opportunity to, to get together and go through what we need to go through, as we've already done that. I think that's where we are now, whether there's a specific number in, in place or not, I think the next step is for us to sit down and do that.
Okay. Let's bring it back to me. We're gonna close the discussion on the motion that we have. Pass the budget as it was presented. All those in favor, say yeah to give in. Yeah, if you wanna pass it as it was presented with the six percent increase, you're voting yes.
No.
Okay, all those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So that motion fails. Does somebody else wanna make another motion?
I made a motion, and we asked the superintendent to go back to the staff, try to shoot for a point, four point seven five, I think, recently.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any more...
What's the motion on the table?
Uh, four point seven five, Beth, for the budget.
Budget goal, that's the budget goal.
I, I can't hear you guys, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna call you.
Okay, thanks.
I need to unplug this when she picks up her phone. We're gonna get everything echo squeal when you just let me know.
You're on speaker, um, Frank made a motion I think that, um, they shoot to get the budget at four point seven five.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? That's the day. Okay, so there is the charge. I appreciate all the work that you did to bring us the budget that you did. And I, I truly understand what we are asking you is not pretty. But it is the reality of Thompson, so...
Is, is there...
Please don't think that we are not supporting the work you do, because we do, it's just, we need to come. So I thank you for taking this number and going back and making more difficult decisions.
Can we, should we put a time request, or to, an opportunity to meet back up to a special meeting, or something with the Board to be able to confer, or are we just relying on if that goal's obtained to approve that submission for finance to, to expedite?
Not the next part of our meeting?
I think they will have it for the...
You just approved four point seven five.
Okay, so in other words...
So if we come to you with four point seven five, it's approved.
Okay.
And you meet with us again before we go to Board of Finance, right?
So we meet with you on the day before we go to Board of Finance, but we would need to get our, our documents to Board of Finance before then. So that's why I'm saying, whatever you do tonight should, should, should serve as the approval, because while we do have time to meet again, we really need to get them all the, the changes. We can get them to you, no problem, no problem. Um, we have an admin meeting on Wednesday, so we'll start there, but...
My question is, we, I made a motion back to set it back to you at four point seven five, we actually drove out four point seven five, is it okay?
Yes, we did, we all agreed.
Three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, about three hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Don't worry, not all of this from Center School. Unless you have it to give.
Matt, may I, I'm ready, make a motion to adjourn?
Maybe you're a second.
Alright.